Okay. I will call the meeting at the Everman City Council, the regular meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, time is 6:01. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence by my pledge of allegiance. Okay, first item on the agenda is consent agenda. Item A, financials for June 2024, July 2024, and August 2024.
And Mayor, we're gonna pull A down to consideration and action to discuss. So we're gonna pull that off of consent agenda.
Okay. All right, then we'll go drop down to item B, minutes for previous meetings. Six, six, 2024, City Council.
I don't think you have to read all those considering they're on a consent agenda.
What's that? Okay. All right, then. What's that?
She said save it, you can save your breath.
All right. Okay. Okay, consent agenda for minutes for our previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes as read.
Motion made, second, any for discussion? Let's poll the council.
Place one. Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four. Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Next item is presentations, item one, item A, Minister oath of office, Animal Control Officer, Emily Williams. Better run while you can.
Not yet.
How are y'all? Is this on? It is on. All right. Perfect. Well, Mayor and Council, we have a new member to add to the team. She actually started a few weeks ago. She has come to us from Parker County, out in Weatherford. Her expertise is in networking and social media relations, and she's working with her Animal Control Division, so with Municipal Animal Services. So we're really excited about that, particularly as we talk about trying to build the cycle of getting these dogs in and out. We think that she'll be very crucial in that role. So Emily, you just wanna tell them just a little bit about yourself, and then we'll jump on and get you sworn in.
Hey, my name's Emily Williams. My main background is actually in horses. I worked for several cutting trainers in the area for a long time, and I have a year and a half in animal shelter experience, networking, rescues, dogs, cats, but I'm also familiar with livestock. So if y'all need me to jump in anywhere, Ray's already had me chasing a pig down the street in Forest Hills, so just jump in anywhere you need me.
Perfect. All right, so if you turn and face me, and then raise your right hand, if you'll repeat after me, I state your name.
Aye, Emily Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Municipal Animal Services.
Of Municipal Animal Services.
Officer. Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
My ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations. Get a signature from you right here. Perfect.
Thank you.
Oh, don't go anywhere, this is yours. Oh. Here we go. Let's take a photo real quick. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate y'all.
Okay, so next item is proclamation for National Night Out. Proclamation declaring October 1st, 2024 is National Night Out, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring its 41st Annual Nationwide Crime, Drug, and Violence Prevention Program on October 1st, 2024, entitled National Night Out, and whereas the 41st Annual Night Out provides a unique opportunity for citizens of Everman to join forces with thousands of communities across the state of Texas in promoting cooperative police community crime and drug prevention efforts. And whereas the National Night Out event is a year-long community-building campaign designed to heighten crime prevention awareness, generate support and participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen neighborhood spirit, and police community partnerships, and send a message to criminals to let them know that neighborhoods are organized and are fighting back. And whereas the citizens play a vital role in assisting the Everman Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that the Everman City Council joins the Everman Police Department and its partnering entities across Texas in crime and drug prevention, and proclaims October 1st, 2024 is National Night Out, all citizens are encouraged to participate in this event. Okay, next item is proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Okay, proclamation Fire Prevention Week, whereas the City of Everman is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022 according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responding to 3,000, or 360,000 home fires, and whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either one, no smoke detector alarm, no smoke alarms, or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you in too danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Whereas Everman residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas Everman residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Everman residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Everman first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Everman residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, smoke alarms, makes them work for you, make them work for you, serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Everman City Council that October 6th through the 12th of 2024 is hereby deemed as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Everman, the City Council urges all citizens to check their homes to ensure they have working smoke alarms and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city, of the Everman Fire Department.
Jeez. Mouthful. Everybody ready? Got it. All right. Thank y'all.
Okay, next item, proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month for 2024. I've asked Miriam Gavilas, place six, to read this, or I don't butcher it.
Proclamation National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mes de Renecia Hispana, is celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year. The observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month at which it is celebrated today. September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and 18th, respectively, and. Whereas the Everman City Council looks forward to celebrating Mes de Renecia Hispana with the greater community to highlight the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations. And whereas Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin America countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain, and whereas recognizing that Hispanic amount to an estimated 49% of the City of Everman population. Understanding that Hispanics are extremely entrepreneurial and play a vital role in our economy and workforce. And whereas the City of Everman recognizes the significant contributions of all Hispanic city employees and numerous grassroots leaders and outreach groups that help increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement with our residents. It is through their support and community involvement that our city has continued to become more culturally diverse and welcoming city for, and a welcoming city for everyone. And whereas the City of Everman is committed to recognizing Hispanic Latino heritage as an important part of the city and its strong inclusive community. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim September 15th to October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Everman.
And Mayor, we have Mr. Richard Garcia from Tuckers Oasis and his family here, as well as several of our employees here that would be happy to receive this proclamation.
You wanna come up too?
All right, sorry. Let me get y'all to slide over just a hair so we got centered on the background there behind you. All right, scoot in just a little bit this way. Everybody ready? Right here, big guy. Hey. Hey. There we go. Got it. All right.
Okay, next item, citizens' comments. Do we have anything? Okay, next item, discussion items, item A, discussion related to. We're moving that to discussion?
Yeah, we can move that down to discussion.
All right, so we need to do that first?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're going, Consent Agenda for Financials, June 2024, July 2024, and August 2024.
So as you recall, financial reports come September. We always have to kind of buckle them all in because starting in June is budget season, and our one-woman shop over here gets completely bogged down with budget through the months of June, July, and August. So it's not uncommon for us every September to kind of bring three of them to you at one time as we're focusing so heavily on budget. Unfortunately, these are not finalized and ready for your receipt just yet. She's still working on cleaning up some of the expenditures to get back over to you. So we're going to table this until the next meeting. She's given you what is finalized and prepared, just so you have it now, but that's why you haven't received anything yet, and that's why we took it off the consent agenda, so I could explain that to you and let you know. We'll bring these reports back to you at the next meeting for you guys to receive them. But wanted to offer that explanation and then answer any questions that you might have, if you have any so far.
Do we need to vote to table it, or are we just going to table it? Okay, okay.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I move we, what do we do? Table the consent agenda on financials.
Second.
Who's second? Who'd you give it to? Okay, most remain seconded, any further discussion? Poll the council.
Place one. Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four. Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, discussion related to proposed ordinance amending the City of Everman Comprehensive zoning ordinance.
So this was actually recommended by the City Attorney's Office quite some time back. I don't know where I failed or why I failed to bring this before you earlier, but we need to make a change based on the attorney's recommendation. Previously, the council had adopted an ordinance that appointed the council as the Board of Adjustments, and the attorney's recommendation is to make that the P&amp;Z Commission, not the council. This does not impact the current case that we're dealing with as far as Building and Standards Commission, so don't confuse the two. You're still serving as the Building and Standards on that case. This is for Board of Adjustments, so anybody requesting a variance, those kinds of things. This ordinance was actually sent to me back in October of last year. In front of you for some reason, but it's here now. It does require public hearings, so we have scheduled two public hearings, October the 7th, another one for council on October the 8th, at which time we will ask both commission, the commission and the council to pass those. And... Have any as...
Say there's two public hearings?
You need to make a change to a zoning ordinance. Both Planning and Zoning and City Council have to hold public hearings.
Each of those holding a meeting counts as the two?
Sorry, say again.
Sorry. Do each of the two, the Planning and Zoning and the council, each having their own public hearing, does that count as the two meetings? Okay, okay. So then the next time council meets, we can take action on it?
I believe we can take action on it the same night we host the second public hearing.
Okay, okay.
So when we hold the public hearing at the council meeting, we can take action to adopt this ordinance that night. You are the members currently of the Board of Adjustments. Yes, ma'am, yeah. Currently, the ordinance calls for the council to serve as the Board of Adjustments. It's attorney's advice and legal opinion that we make that the Planning and Zoning Commission, as to avoid any conflict.
Place two, staff report discussion on city events.
All right. I'm sorry. Uh-oh. All right, so first off, we had our homecoming parade. Do you mind sharing the presentation? Thank you. We had our homecoming parade this last week, and it was amazing. I really appreciate everybody that came out. I really also want to give a super special shout-out to Chief Watley and Gilbert and Rodolfo, who worked really hard on getting this, this float put together and built. The cold front didn't come fast enough, so they were doing this at 98-degree temps outside, and they didn't stop working or give up, so I really appreciate it. It was a clever idea, I think, that many people liked, and I think everybody had a lot of fun with it, so I think it was fun. That, well, we tried. We definitely tried. That took some, that took some, some southern ingenuity to make that work, but we made it happen. It was interesting.
I only have one complaint. Those cross-members in the trailer, you got a member of the people climbing up in there or in their 60s, and kind of hard...
It'll be here at the Civic Center on Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also, coming up pretty quick, October 1st is our National Night Out. I think we've got everything finalized and ready to go. It's going to be a great community event, so please make sure to be here if you can. The event starts at 6:00 p.m., and we'll go typically about 8:00 o'clock is usually when people start, start leaving. I'm really, normally I'm excited about all the police stuff, but I'm, I've seen what Public Works has ordered and some of the insane shipments I've seen come in that they've got, and I'm really curious to see their theme this year. So maybe want to come out and check out their theme, see what they got going. He is ignoring me. Also, Public Works is coordinating a Pittman Park cleanup. This is actually part to, in part, to meet a TCEQ requirement, so we're going to do two of these pretty close together this year, because we're actually required to have two of these events a year, and we're coming up on the end of the year and haven't had one. So that's, we're going to have this one, and then you'll see another one come up in November as well over at Johnson Park. So the Pittman Park cleanup will be on Friday, October 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. The community is encouraged to come out along with staff to pretty much pick up trash and clean out all of the debris that's within our, within our park and within and near our waterways, and try to clean that area up. So that'll be on Friday, October the 18th.
Now, we are still looking at the oil collection, used oil collection?
Yes, the, yes, we should be doing that, I think, in November in conjunction with the, the biannual Trash Collection Day that we do with Waste Connections. Do not, not yet. Yes, ma'am. We, quite honestly, we haven't had much of a, of a great citizen turnout on Saturday, and so therefore a lot of it relies pretty heavily on the staff to get out there and do the cleanup, and so that's, that's why. The last two we've done on Saturdays, we've had maybe four or five residents that show up, and so we actually wind up with fewer people doing the work, rather than doing it on a Friday where at least the staff is out there and those residents that can't come participate, come and participate. Also, during the week, we can solicit help from the Tarrant County Sheriff's Office Group, the Community Supervision Group that comes out and helps us out with those things too, so. High school groups, yep. Yes, ma'am, we will. Typically in November, I don't think it's been scheduled just yet, but it'll be in November.
You think employees will show up when we're closed on Fridays?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a good turnout. All right, next, the very next day, Battle of the Badges. So this is ramping up to be a great event. We've actually had several sponsors step up this year, so we've got some awesome door prizes that are going to be a part of this, so come out, get a ticket, have some fun, and you might even earn an award, earn a gift basket of some kind. We've got Made Pickles, Texas Rangers, all kinds of groups that have backed us up on this this year, so it should be a lot of fun. Last year was a lot of fun, and we're just trying to make it bigger and better each year. I have confidence, I have confidence this year, police is, police is going to come out on top. We're going, we're going to take it. He wasn't sick last year. That was an excuse. And then lastly, October 24th is our Halloween Festival, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., again at Timberview Farmstead, so we're really excited about this event. We have over 40 vendors that have signed up already. We're getting ready to work and have a meeting with Timberview to discuss the layout and try to get everything finalized, but this is going to be a phenomenal event. It's also queuing up right when they're going to have their pumpkin patch that opens up every Saturday in October, so there should be some really great amenities in addition to the Halloween Festival that'll be available for anybody that comes out there. And that's all I've got for city events. Unless you have any questions. Uh, I mean, yes, there is, but I will say that those digital signage, similar to like what you see out here in front of the Civic Center for events? We have, we do have one. We have a mobile message board sign that is ours, that we own, that we can certainly put up to advertise events at any point in time anywhere. And then typically, we have access to All-American Barricade, who has helped us out with advertising other events too, and we can, we can look at marketing those and putting those up for these events if they're willing to help us out with that. Sure. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So we'll drop down, consideration of possible action. Item A, Resolution Number 2024-09-01, Resolution of the Everman, of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, casting vote for election of Texas Municipal League Region 8 Director, authorizing the City Secretary to sign and cast the city's official ballot in conformance herewith and providing an effective date.
And mayor, before you entertain a motion, we will need a name for that resolution.
So does anybody have any, did anybody really, any of them really stand out to anybody of the four?
Dad, all of them. John McKenzie.
John, oh, Joe, John?
John.
Okay, the incumbent. Okay.
Yeah, the same.
Kind of going along with what I was thinking.
John.
You know, just sticking with the incumbent since we, we hadn't had any issues, they've been working well.
Well, after reading all of them, this was the one that stood out to me.
Yeah. Well, he's actually reached out to us. I got another letter from him last week. There's a couple of things they're taking before the board and wanting to know if we had any input on it, and I took it to Craig, and there are two areas that really don't affect us.
Yeah.
So, but he asked, so, which I like that, so hopefully that'll be a common practice here in the near future, so. Is everybody good with that nomination? So, do we want to make a motion?
Yes. I move we approve Resolution Number 2024-09-01, voting for John McKenzie. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Would you poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two. Place three. Place four. Place five.
Aye.
Place six. Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, now the law. Item B, Resolution Number 2024-09-02, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, casting votes for election of representatives through places 11 through 14 of the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees, authorizing the City Secretary to sign and cast the city's official ballot in conformance herewith and providing an effective date. So this is same, we've got to have, so we need to decide the four, and then, and they'll be included in the motion. Were we good with the incumbents? Everybody good with the incumbents?
I didn't bring my paperwork.
I've got, got it here. Let me see, there's incumbent.
Okay, so...
And one of us running unopposed, so.
What are, what are you looking at?
What's that?
I said, which ones are you looking at? All of them.
Well, the incumbents, place 11 is Randy Criswell.
Right, yeah.
Place 12 is Allison Hayward.
Good.
Place 13 is Harland Jefferson. And then 14 is Mike Land, he's running unopposed.
Great. I had that.
Thirty.
Okay. Perfect.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution 2024-09-02 with Randy Criswell in place 11, Allison Hayward in place 12, Harland Jefferson in place 13, and Mike Land in place 14. I second.
Most remain seconded, any further discussion? Poll the council.
Place one. Place two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six. Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, Ordinance Number 822, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 3, Records Management Program of the City of Everman Code of Ordinances by adopting a new section 2-47, electronic signatures, authorizing the usage of electronic signatures for city documents, providing a subvariability clause, providing a pillar clause, and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve Ordinance Number 822 as read.
Most remain seconded, any further discussion?
Just for clarification, so this is an ordinance that is required and was requested by our Director of Human Resources, who worked with the City Attorney's Office to present it, primarily affecting employment records and authorizing the collection of electronic signatures for employment purposes, so.
Everybody's doing it.
Yes, ma'am. Got to get with the times.
Correct.
Any questions or comments? Poll the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is Executive Session, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, Past Performance Review and Evaluation of the City Manager. The time is 6:36. Will we go into executive session?
Time is seven twenty-nine. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the city attorney to prepare and have executed an amendment to the city manager's employment contract to include a six point five increase to annual base salary effective October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Hold counsel.
Place one. Place two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, let's see. Oh, that was number eleven. Okay. Uh, city manager's report.
I've got just a couple of things. So, staff is currently working on year end and preparing for the new year in a week. Uh, so we're a week away from starting the new budget year, so we're all working on trying to close out. Last year, we've already had interim audit come out and start some audit work, um, getting ready for our
One more audit?
Another audit. You go from budget to audit, back to budget to audit. Um, so that actually went pretty well. Um, it was, it was remarkably quick. Um, and it was quick thanks to everybody's response, including the response from council on, on a lot of things. So, um, thank you for, if you, if you had to communicate with the auditors, thank you for doing that so quickly. Um, also a great job to Susan for all her work and making sure that that was an expeditious visit, uh, cause it's always kind of nerve wracking when you have auditors hanging around all day. Um, I had hosted a faith-based leaders meeting, um, here in the civic center. We invited all of our local church pastors and groups to come in, uh, just to kind of communicate a little bit and get to know each other a little bit, find out what we could do for our local faith-based organizations and see if, uh, we can't bring them to be more involved with some of our community activities. Um, the meeting was great. Uh, they want to put a heavy focus on youth activities and trying to do more for our youth here. So, we decided that we're going to start hosting quarterly faith-based leaders meetings, uh, with them, between them and the city, so that we can find out ways to maybe launch some programs to focus on our youth here in the community and offer more to our youth. Um, so that was a very beneficial kickoff meeting, and I'm excited to see what that brings. Um, also, um, I've added all of you within base camp, uh, the Hannah Ranch Sewer Main Project has been kicked back off. If you recall, this project started back in two thousand and twenty. Um, we had some meetings in two thousand and twenty-one. This is a sewer main that's going to extend from Anglin Street, uh, all the way to down Enon up to Royce Brook's and then back over here to this industrial development. Um, that was a pretty big project we were excited about because it's going to cover all new road construction on Enon Avenue. Um, and we've been delaying road projects on Enon for this sewer line. Unfortunately, it got tied up in some litigation with the city of Fort Worth, but that litigation has now been settled and cleared, and we have a new contractor on the project ready to kick off. So, we have a community construction meeting that they have asked us to host, which will be on October the third at six P M. Here in the civic center, I should have flyers ready to go out here pretty soon. We're partnering with the city of Fort Worth. We're also going to livestream that meeting as well, so that any of the citizens can, can watch and get information about that project. But again, that project should include a brand-new sewer main, as well as complete road reconstruction of any roads that have been impacted, which includes Enon Avenue from down around Hickory Stick all the way to almost Royce Brook's. So, a pretty good chunk of Enon Avenue will be reconstructed following that sewer line installation. That's all I have there.
Events like that, if we could add it to do a calendar invite for council members on all of our events, that may be another avenue to keep everybody up to date on stuff.
Okay.
So, mayor's report. I don't have anything. So, uh, the time is seven thirty-three. We are adjourned.